While the ballots are being counted, I'm just gonna kinda run through the procedure for this evening. As you've seen so far, we do have a healthy number of articles. It's a manageable number. So my job is to help us get through those as quickly and efficiently as possible, but to make sure anyone that wants to be heard can be heard. So for tonight's meeting, we are gonna ask that if you do wish to speak, if you can come down to the mics on either side. And when you do get to the mic and it's your turn, if you can just state your name and your street that you're living on. And we're anxious to hear what you have to say. So when you came in, everyone was handed the packet. And the packet is really helpful for this evening to kind of go through what we're going through. The first section is the bylaws. Town meeting is run by a combination of our town's bylaws and a publication called Town Meeting Time. So it's also my job to make sure we kinda stay with those rules. Some of them are a bit foreign, so if there's a question on process or procedure, just feel free to raise your hand or come down to the mic, and I can try to explain what's happening and help you out. The select board puts forth the warrant. So that is the legal document that puts anyone on notice on what will be discussed tonight. And then the actual motions are what you'll be voting on. So the warrants are more general. The motions are specifically what the votes will be on this evening. So while you can read along in the packet, the motions will be what you wanna see, and they will be up on the screen as well. So in terms of what will happen, the motion will be made. It'll be seconded at that point. We'll take any recommendations from committees. And at that point, you would be able to ask any questions or have your input at that point. So if you wish to amend any of the motions, we do require, and our bylaws require, that those motions to amend be made in writing. So we have paper down here if that's necessary. Again, when you hear about democracy, this is it. So this is your chance, our chance, to legislate on behalf of the town. The select board has put forth these warrant articles, but ultimately, it's your vote that controls, and it's your voice that should be heard. So even if it's not pretty, we'd love to hear from you and have the town be able to deliberate with your input.
106 votes for Jen Wallace, two blanks.
The ballot is complete. We have 106 votes for Jen Wallace to be our acting clerk, and we have two blank ballots. So at this point, Jen will be the acting clerk for the purposes of this meeting. Again, this town has a great history of being respectful of one another when you speak. But really, anything that you are gonna say should come from the mic. So if there are comments that you're itching to make, please keep those to yourself unless you come to the mic and make them to the whole form. And again, in terms of process, any questions or comments are meant to be directed back to me as the moderator and not any of the select board or any other speakers. So if we can just respect that as well. And with that, let's get started. So I'd like to start with the introduction of the head table. I'll start with myself. My name is Dan Graves. I'm the town moderator. And to my right?
Lisa Mead, town council.
Casey Warren, town administrator.
Brenda Hill, town accountant.
Jen Wallace, assistant town clerk.
Dave Wolfram, select board.
Trevor McDaniel, select board.
Carolyn Ness, select board.
Allison Vandervelden, finance committee.
Julie Chalfont, finance committee.
John Pachurk, finance committee.
Skip Homestead, finance committee.
Beth Brown, finance committee.
John Pareski, finance committee and personnel board.
James Cambius, finance committee and library trustee.
As has been the tradition at all meetings, we do start with the pledge of allegiance. So if you're comfortable, if you could please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands and has one nation, under God, individual liberties and justice for all.
I do have two initial moderator motions. My first motion, I move that the reading of all articles be waived and that prior to the reading of a motion under the article, the moderator briefly summarize the content of the article to be considered and further that unless objection is raised, the reading of detailed motions be waived where the article is printed can and the opinion of the moderator be incorporated by reference in any motion presented.
Second.
This is just a procedural motion that again is meant to expedite things. So I can summarize the motion or explain things as it becomes necessary. Are there any questions on that? All those in favor? Opposed. The motion carries. I move that the following people be allowed to address the audience during the town meeting. Attorney Lisa Mead, town council. Brenda Hill, town accountant. Casey Warren, town administrator. Darius Modesto, superintendent Frontier Regional Union 38 Schools. Shalib Pareta, director of business administration Frontier Regional Union 38 Schools. Tina Gemme, principal Deerfield Elementary. Richard Martin, superintendent Franklin County Technical School. And Russell Cobris, business manager Franklin County Technical School.
Second.
Again, in our town meeting, non-voters are not allowed to speak without permission from the body. So this is to allow individuals that may have input in some of our motions this evening to allow them to speak. Any questions? All those in favor, if you can raise your green card. Opposed. The motion carries. Some of you may remember that last year, we tried a consent agenda. And the concept of the consent agenda is allow us to kinda crunch together several matters into a single vote. It's designed to be what we would call non-controversial matters, more routine matters. But if there is something in the consent that you do have, wish to have some input on, if you can just state "hold" as Mr. Wolfram reads that particular letter, and we'll come back to it before the vote. So with that, Mr. Wolfram?
I move the town approve Article 1 as set forth in the warrant on the following matters of A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
Mr. Wolfram, if you could just briefly summarize?
This is a motion to carry on a lot of the normal business of the town, establishing the pay for the moderator, the select board. We also, at this time, gratefully acknowledge the gifts from our people at Deerfield Academy of 133,000, Eagle Brook of 26,000, Bement School of 10,000, and Woolman Hill of $4,327. And the monetary pledges towards the replacement of the Deerfield Elementary roof, completed in 2016, paid over a five-to-10-year period. Deerfield Academy has contributed 105,000. Eagle Brook, 75,000. Historic Deerfield, 25,000. And Bement School, 20,000. Pledges received in the last 12 months. Deerfield Academy, 21,000. Eagle Brook, 7,500. Historic Deerfield, 5,000. Bement School, 2,000. Monetary donations towards the resource officer in the past 12 months. Deerfield Academy of 30,000. Monetary donation towards replacement of the sewer pipes. Deerfield Academy, 270,000. Monetary donation towards July, 21 storm damage on Greenfield Road. Deerfield Academy, 5,000. Monetary donation towards South County EMS operations. Deerfield Academy, $700. And we would also like to gratefully acknowledge countless non-monetary gifts made by all the nonprofit partners in the town during the last 12 months. With the library, Dickerson Library, Tilton Library for library use is 85%. So that's $2,303. Frontier Regional School for library use, 15%, $406, which is a total of $2,709. Acceptance of gifts authorized the select board to apply for, accept and expend for specific purposes any monies provided by any federal and state grants or programs which may be awarded to the town. Authorized, F is authorize the select board in accordance with general law, Chapter 30B, Section 12, Paragraph B, to negotiate and enter into contracts with vendors as they deem necessary or beneficial for the term of no more than five years. Assessors' contract authority authorized the board of assessors in accordance with the general laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12, Paragraph B, to negotiate and enter into contracts with vendors as deemed necessary or beneficial for a term of no more than five years.
Are there any questions? Just gonna just make another pause and just mention that the finance committee meets with the select board and with other various committees and makes their recommendations. So they meet frequently and put a lot of work into the finished product that's here this evening. A lot of times, we'll turn to them and ask for their recommendation. This year, their recommendations are printed in the guide, so they will have some input from time to time. But otherwise, you'll note their recommendations when you read them. So this was recommended by the finance committee. Any other questions? All those in favor, the motion as presented. Opposed. The motion carries. Same process again. This is a consent agenda. And Mr. McDaniel?
So I move the town approve Article 2 to transfer from free cash for the following items. A, B, C, and D as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Article 3, Mr. Wolfram?
I move the town approve the maximum amounts of revolving funds established in the Deerfield General Bylaws of Chapter 20, Section 20-3, Departmental Revolving Funds Pursuit, General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as referenced in this article. Second.
Mr. Wolfram, would you like to briefly explain?
These are revolving funds that we use that as money comes in, we expend. So we have the recycling of $20,000 at the transfer station, Parks and Recreation, with the fees of $75,000, and with the planning board for permits and fees. And that's $25,000.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Article 4, Ms. Schorzeness.
I move the town amend Deerfield General Bylaws, Chapter 20, Section 20-3, Departmental Revolving Funds to add a new fund. And we are going to pass over this?
Second.
We just found out, we just found out that the Department of Revenue wants us to go through the general funds. So this is not needful.
So under our bylaws, even though the select board is asking the motion be passed over, we do need to have a vote on that. So if you are in favor of the article being passed over, which means no action will be taken this evening, all those in favor? Opposed. The motion is passed over. Article 5, Ms. Schorzeness?
I move the town vote to authorize the Deerfield School Committee to enter into a memorandum of understanding for foster care transportation with the Executive Office of Human and Health and Human Services, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Department of Children and Families under the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Second.
If you could just briefly summarize?
Yes. This article authorizes the school committee to enter into memorandum of understanding with the agencies of the Commonwealth to provide foster care transportation.
Any questions? All those in favor, green cards? Opposed. Motion carries. Article 6, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town adopt the Classification Compensation Plan in accordance with the Deerfield General Bylaws, Chapter 35, Personnel, Article 3, Classification Compensation Plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, as referenced in this article.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, if you want to briefly summarize?
So this is a compensation plan that we've been working on over the last couple of years. Each year, we come to the town meeting and ask the town meeting to approve our compensation plan for all the employees. And this has been a two-year process. Last year, we had one plan that we're transitioning everybody over into a new grading and step system.
Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Article 7, Ms. Schorzeness?
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $57,842 to fund a fiscal year 2022 shortfall for snow and ice removal expenses.
Second.
Just a brief summary?
These expenses incurred for snow and ice removal for this past winter, even though we had few snowstorms, salt was more expensive, and we did have quite a few events that needed to be taken care of.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. The motion carries. Article 8, Mr. Wolfram?
I move the moderator read amounts recommended to be appropriated under this article, as referenced in the handout, and unless objection is made, each item recommended in the report of the finance committee shall be tentatively accepted as appropriated for the purpose stated. If an objection is made for any recommendation, such appropriation shall be taken separately, and the amount thereof and the matter of the taking of the same shall be determined by vote of the meeting and tentatively accepted. One vote shall be taken appropriating each amount, so acceptance as a single appropriation not be exceeded. Second.
Second. So the budget line items are in the package that you received. And what's gonna happen is I'm gonna read each and every line. And when I do read them, if you have any questions or you'd like to have a discussion on that particular line, if you could just holler out "hold." And once we've completed reading all of them, we'll go back to the holds and take them in order for discussion. The finance committee, again, has worked closely on the budget, and they did ask for your consideration in having a brief presentation before we begin that process. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the finance committee for a moment.
Okay, look at that. My slides are up. Okay, I'm Julie Chalfont. I'm chair of the finance committee this year. We have a short presentation, as the moderator said, on the budget itself. First line is that this is a balanced budget that meets Prop 2.5 requirements, which is kind of setting a low bar. That's like saying we were following the law. But the finance committee process, we reviewed every line item with the appropriate department head or committee. We invited the select board to join us in that process. There was a lot of discussion back and forth, and many of the budget requests were modified during that discussion. What we ended up at is a, as I said, balanced budget that all the individual line items are reasonably justified through that discussion. It was by no means unanimous. I think probably every one of us disagreed with at least one of the line items. But at the end, we came to a reasonably justified budget. Some highlights of this. Yes, beautiful. It is not a level service budget. There are several budget line items that increase services. There's new hours, new positions, new contracted services. A summary of that is on page nine in the handout that you have right there. We also have a few significant cost increases that were not increased services, but they're just stuff that happened to us. Pandemic impacts, loss of a grant, that type of thing. Those are summarized on page 10 in your handout. The remainder of the municipal budget line items provide level services. That doesn't mean it's the same amount of money as last year. There are changes. You know, there's inflation. There's cost of living increases. There's some reductions through savings that people found. There's sometimes fluctuations for things like the number of elections that happen a year, biennial audits that happen this year, whatever. So those are the highlights from the budget. The financial committee, the finance committee analysis, looking at this budget, first point is that we do support this budget and we recommend voting this budget. But there's two main things that we wanna make sure everybody understands when we look at this budget. First is that the personnel costs have increased quite a bit. There are more hours. There are new positions. There are increased salaries for the people that we already have. It's important to have reasonable competitive wages for town employees. We want the employees that we have to keep working for us. They are marvelous. And we want, when we have an open position, to be able to actually hire somebody who will come and work for us. So from that perspective, we completely support reasonable competitive wages. What we need to understand is that personnel costs tend to increase faster than 2.5%. So if you're trying to meet Prop 2.5 guidelines, it becomes more challenging the heavier your budget is weighted in personnel. Right? That's the first point. The second point we wanted to make is actually pretty similar. It's that this year, we had the luxury of using one-time federal grant funds. The select board voted for those funds to be used to support capital expenditures, which is the perfect thing to spend one-time funds on, right? You spend one-time funds on one-time expenses. But some of these things were things that we would normally be looking within our regular town budget to fund. So we have slightly shifted the balance between our routine operating expenses and our capital investments. So next year, when we have capital investments we wanna make, we may not have those one-time federal funds to use. So both of those things make this budget a little challenging. It's fine this year, but in future years, we're gonna be interested in figuring out how to handle that. So we wanted everybody to understand both of those items. But again, the bottom line is that the finance committee supports this budget and recommends voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to start to read the line items. Moderator: $400. Select Board salaries: $16,000. Select Board staff salaries: $254,724. Select Board administrator expense: $12,250. Finance committee: $500. Accountant salary: $78,940. So hold on accountant salary. Accountant expense: $17,025. Assessor salaries: $11,000. Assessor's administrative assistant: $69,700. Assessor's expense: $18,875. Assessor's quennerial recertification: $25,000. Treasurer-collector salaries: $191,507. Treasurer-collector expense: $37,710. Legal expense: $75,500. Personnel board: $750. IT hardware: $5,000. PG access capital expense: $4,000. Contracted services: $271,435. Town clerk salary: $34,760. Town clerk expense: $25,568. Conservation commission: $1,000. Open space committee: $250. Planning board: $2,000. Zoning board of appeals: $1,000. Agricultural commission: $100. Energy committee: $1,000. Town office building maintenance: $85,500. Town office expense: $14,000. General insurance: $63,000. Police payroll: $994,14. Police department expense: $114,300. Police department cruiser: $55,000. Inspections department payroll: $169,177. Inspection department expense: $4,950. Emergency management: $2,800. Canine control: $20,954. Deerfield Elementary School: $5,098,948.
Hold.
So hold on the elementary school. Frontier Regional School: $4,104,75.
Hold.
Hold. Frontier Regional Capital: $1,385. Frontier Regional Transportation: $79,511. Franklin Technical School Assessment: $549,444. General highway expense: $304,550. Winter snow and ice removal: $95,000. Street lighting: $23,000. Transfer station expense: $219,900. Test well monitoring and maintenance: $38,000. Board of health salary: $97,884. There's a hold. Board of health expense: $13,975. Emergency COVID expense: zero. Council on Aging: $500. Senior center expense: $64,993. Veterans district assessment: $13,743. Veterans benefits: $21,000. ADA coordinator: $250. Tilton Library: $202,983. Summer swim program: $6,310. Tri-Town Beach expense: $27,220. Recreational department director's salary: $53,167. Historical commission: $1,175. Veterans Day, Memorial Day expense: $2,000. Maturing debt: $457,815. Interest on maturing debt: $196,545. Interest on temporary loans: $5,000. FurCog Core Assessment: $45,091. Unfunded sick leave and vacation: $10,000. Franklin County Regional Retirement: $623,521. Workers' compensation: $40,928. Unemployment insurance: $27,000. Group insurance for the town: $310,939. Group insurance for the schools: $635,418. Medicare insurance: $103,386. So with that, we'll start with the holds. And the first hold was on the accountant's salary. Whoever made the hold, if they can come down to the mic? And then the holds on Deerfield and Frontier. If you wanna kinda make your way down on the mic just to keep things moving, that's great.
Robert Greenspan, 50 Eastern Avenue. I appreciate all the hard work you guys do. But I've just had a question that just stood out to me. That's a 38% increase, which seems rather large. Maybe there's a reason for that. But it's a 38% increase, which seems out of line with most of the increases here. Just wondered what the logic of that was?
Sure, thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
So the reason we changed that increase is because there's an increase in hours and job duties. So the accountant has taken on a lot more of the budget finance director kind of of the town, has been running the budget a lot more heavily involved in that, and is also increasing the amount of work she's been doing in hours. And even at that rate, it's a bargain. It's really hard to find accountants right now, and we're very happy to have her working for us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, at this point, are you satisfied with your question? Would you like to remove the hold or?
Yeah, I assume you guys have done due diligence. It's just stood out as like...
Of course.
Now, you said that she's taken on responsibilities of another position?
Yes.
Just come right up to the mic so we can all hear you. No, no problem.
And the position that... Who used to do that job?
Well, no one really used to do it. A lot of people would just kinda pull their stuff together. But she's really taken on a lot more of that lead. Some stuff was done by previous town administrators. Some stuff was done by finance committee, select board. She's really, really done a fantastic job working our budget together.
Yeah.
Countless hours.
Well, good ones are hard to find. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, sir.
So the hold is removed on that. Deerfield Elementary, do you wanna take them separately or Deerfield in front? Go ahead.
I can, it's a similar issue for both.
Sure.
First, to the finance committee, thank you for the information that's been posted up on Facebook. I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate seeing some of that historical data as to where we're trending. Thanks for putting the work in. My concern on the two education budgets, and I've said this before, is the students that are admitted from outside the district, the school choice students. 17% of the student body at Deerfield Elementary is school choice. 28% at Frontier. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, state gives us about $5,000 per student. Quick back-of-the-nap, back-of-the-green-card math, it costs about $17,500 to educate a student at Deerfield Elementary. So we are on the hook for $12,500 per student, times 56 students. It's about $700,000 that we pay to educate students that don't live in the town. When we get into Frontier, and I wasn't able to figure out the true cost of what it costs us to educate a student in Frontier, because I didn't have all the data and I didn't get the reports until this evening when I walked in, I'll make a stab at it. You know, if we, about $10,000 a student, maybe after the $5,000 from the state comes in. So $10,000 per student, times 173 students, it's a million seven. And that's split between the four districts. So I understand we probably have a part of that. I don't know Deerfield's portion of that?
51%.
Okay, I guess 45. So 51% of a million seven, another 850-plus thousand dollars. So we're at a million and a half dollars educating students that reside outside of Deerfield. And while I'm very thankful and I appreciate the increased donations from our nonprofit partners at the north end of town, every time properties come off of our tax roll, families move into those houses and they come down to come into Deerfield schools, we have to pay for that. And we're not collecting taxes on those properties any longer. So there's also an increased burden to the taxpayers to support children who come from homes that are no longer taxed or properties are untaxed. who come from homes that are no longer taxed, or properties are untaxed in the north end of town. So as Julie mentioned, we're up against a two and a half proposition, which is kind of a low bar for us, but we're generous enough to spend this money to educate and take care of people outside of our town. I don't want to be the bad guy, but I think it's something we really need to get on top of and need to figure out, because we have needs in this town, and you're going to hear more about them as this meeting goes on. All it's going to mean is increase cost to us to pay to educate others. My, my motto has always been, if you want your kids to come to school in this town, purchase a property in this town. Thank you.
I'll remove my hold.
Thank you.
Select Board, want to comment at all or? Okay, hold is removed. The next item was the Board of Health salary.
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Sorry, it's my first meeting. I'm...
Oh, you're welcome.
I just looked at this first time.
Just your name and your street address too, so we can get to know you?
I apologize. Robert Greenspan, 50 Eastern Avenue.
Great, thank you.
And I just was curious, again, the Board of Health salary's gone up 250%, which seems like a large amount. Maybe we're more people. I don't know. I just wanted a kind of a overview of why.
Ms. Shores Ness, would you like to address that?
Yes. We're going from a 20-hour position. Dick Kelishewski is retiring, and I'm kind of burned out after COVID, so I'm stepping down a little bit, and I have work for free. So there is going to be an increase to cover my hours. And so this, what this does is go to a 32-hour position, and you have to pay slightly more. We are very lucky to have someone who is willing to work for less than what the going rate is in the valley. But it does address the increased workload from food trucks like the tree, from Treehouse. And we are, we adjusted our fee schedule to cover the additional costs of having a paid person versus, you know, just Dick and I going on a weekend and, you know, inspecting a food truck and then that's it. This is anticipated to be every weekend. Deerfield Academy had put in a lovely skating rink and had a food truck, so, you know, every Friday they, we had an inspection. You have a pre-inspection, you have another inspection. It's different than our restaurants. Our restaurants, you do a couple of times a year, unless you have problems and you go back and, you know, both of us go to witness a, you know, a problematic situation, and we, until it's resolved, we keep re-inspecting. And of course, we charge every time. But in the food truck situation, this is all new. This is a new business model that's happening at Berkshire Brew, and every time a food truck leaves and comes back, you do a pre-inspection and then a re-inspection on that day. And the reason why is because sanitation, the cleaning of, of the unit, plus your food temperatures, whether it's freezing or heating, is really critical. And so you have to observe and make sure that it is safe, because food safety, of course, is number one. So we have this food truck model that is brand new and is a huge workload. So, for example, totally, we collected fees last year in septic, about $6,500. And, and then our food restaurant inspections were $9,035. This year to date, which is only April, we've collected septic is $12,750, and then our other restaurant kind of fees is $12,305. We will again review our fee schedule in the fall to make sure that we're covering our activities. Most of our activities are covered with fees. However, housing expenses and COVID-related complaints and that kind of thing, there isn't any money. So we don't necessarily break even, but we try to get, cover our expenses as best we can.
Wow. Thank, thank you for, you're very, very comprehensive, and apparently you've been doing this for free, and we're going to miss you. Appreciate that.
I'm still around.
We actually even have a little more info for you. The town administrator asked to speak, so.
This also covers more than one position, sir. So you have two part-time positions, three part-time positions, and the Board of Health agent position, which is several more hours as Ms. Shores Ness said.
So it used to be one and now it's three, is that?
It actually used to be one alternate and a health agent, and now we're, there's, we've restructured a couple of other budgets.
So you have more people, more money.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You can release the hold.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Nice to see you.
May I?
I believe that was the last of the holds, so.
Julie?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
I don't want to defend this because I was arguing against this line item for ages, but I also want to point out that the Board of Health expense, the next line item down, the visiting nurse used to be on that line because it was a contract. It's now a hired position, so that's moved up to this line. So the whatever 20,000 dropped there moved up one line.
Yes. We have 25,000 additional nurse hours under the Board of Health salary, whereas it was dropped in the Board of Health expense. And the reason why is we have coverage through a grant. We have actually two grants and potentially three multi-year grants that will allow us to have a lot more hours. Our senior center is very exciting. We'll have 12 hours actually at the senior center covering our nurse hours, and then we'll have COVID nurse hours as well as your regular, you know, disease that we have to report as, you know, like Lyme disease or, you know, some kind of geri... Just, just anything that's reportable, we are covered under the grant now. So it actually, we're getting a lot more services for less money.
So that removed all the holds. So now if there's just any general discussion on the budget before we vote on it? Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of the budget as presented? Motion carries. Yes.
Okay, I move the town appropriate $16,708,930 to fund the accepted amounts voted, and to meet this appropriation, transfer $65,000 from the South County EMS Enterprise Fund, $6,700 from the South County Senior Center Fund, $69,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $5,984 from receipts received from debt, $8,500 from the Cemetery Revolving Fund, and $38,809 from free cash, and raise and appropriate $16,514,937.
Second. Essentially, you passed the budget, and now we have to pay for it. So this article explains where the funds will come from in order to, to fund the budget you just passed. So all those in fa... Is there any questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
If I could make one note on that.
I'd just like to point out that the Franklin County assessment went up a fair amount, but I think it's very encouraging to see our youth getting into the trades. We had 18 students before. We now have 29 going to Franklin Tech, which is a very positive thing, I feel, especially if any of you in here have tried to hire a plumber, electrician, or a carpenter. So that's, it's very encouraging, I think, so.
Article nine, Mr. Wolfram.
Okay. Got to flip my pages here. I move the town appropriate $45,094 pursuant to General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 7, sufficient and included in the ominous budget to fund the Massachusetts Coalition of Police IUPA AFL-CIO Collective Bargaining Agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Second. Mr. Wolfram, if you could briefly explain?
We've been in negotiations with the, the police union, and I think we're pretty close to being ratified now. And this is the increase of the budget for the salaries on the union members. It brings them up closer to what the area it is. It doesn't actually exceed the amounts, but it does bring them closer. And as the board, we looked at it, and we felt for this three-year contract, it was appropriate to make steps throughout the next three years to make it competitive. Those of you that don't realize this, we've got one of the best police departments in Massachusetts. It, the downside to that is state police, ATF, Secret Service, everybody wants our guys. So it, so we try to make it economical to keep them here, so.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 10, Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town vote to appropriate $1,774,240 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to fund the sewer wastewater treatment enterprise fund as presented in this guide.
Second. Mr. McDaniel, briefly?
So this is, this is the fund, our sewer is run with an enterprise fund, much like the South County EMS. So we, we take in user fees. We have, obviously, we'll talk more about it a little later, but we have projects going on, and this is to fund, we take money from retained earnings, sewer user fees, and investment income to pay for the expenses that we have, such as debt service and operating expenses and salary.
This was approved by the Finance Committee and also the Capital Improvement Committee?
Yes.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries as well. Article 11, Ms. McDaniel?
I move that the town raise and appropriate $3 million to pay for the cost of upgrading the South Deerfield wastewater treatment facility and opportunances thereto, including but not limited to planning, design, permitting, bidding, and construction, as well as all other costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this set, this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, to issue bonds or notes of the town upon such terms as the treasurer and the select board shall determine, and further provided that said appropriation shall be subject and contingent upon an affirmation vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payments of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter C, General Law, Chapters 59, Section 21C, Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Mr. McDaniel?
So this is to raise the funds we need to finish the South Deerfield plant. All that maybe have been aware and following, we've been working on the wastewater treatment plant in South Deerfield and the pipes in town to, to bring them up to speed. In 2019, we asked for an appropriation of 19 million to start the work at the plant. And in four years, the world is, has really changed as far as what we had hoped to have for the projects we wanted to complete with that funding at that time. It's been a real struggle. I mean, you all kind of recognize everything. If we, if we were going to do the same project we hoped to do in 2019, the cost for inflation and due to supply shortages and everything else, that it would have raised about 30, 34% in just that short amount of time. In the last two years alone, we've had in non-residential construction inflation of 19%. So it's, it's really taken a toll on the project that we wanted to complete. So the sewer user, the sewer committee working group, select board, and our, our engineers, and the contractors, and Finance Committee members, we've all gotten together and really worked hard to try and find ways to adjust that, that, the projects that we wanted to do. The main, our main focus is to meet permit, and we're putting in a fantastic headworks building to try and clean the sewer stream, get all the rags and everything out of that. All that's going well. We have our, our clarifier updated. We've got a secondary clarifier going in. Because of the cost of the bids that have come in and the amount, the amount that it takes to do, we've slimmed back, we've pulled some phase, some items from Phase Two into Phase One, and we've, we've put some things on hold. And really, the second phase is to finish out the project by taking care of the aeration tanks. That's one of the second, that's kind of the lungs of the project. The first phase had been all the heart, like all the stuff coming into the system, making sure that's clean and working well, and, and clarity when it goes out. But really, it's the, it's managing the bugs and balancing the, the BOD load and the oxygen in that to make sure that you're getting a clear, you know, clear, clear liquids out to the clarifier to settle and then out, out to the plant. So we hate to be back here asking for this. I mean, it's not what we had hoped four years ago, but, but it is reality. So we feel certain things we're going to put on hold, but the things that are going to meet permit, we, we really think it's the most important thing to do. I'll just add one more thing to this, is that we have a fantastic contractor right now. Waterline Industries has been amazing to work with. They're efficient, very few change orders, and, and the change orders we've had have sometimes been in the savings. I mean, so we really have not had to spend much of our, our, you know, the money you set aside in case something goes wrong. That we hope to use with some change orders. The whole idea is to fund this now because we want to hang on to that contractor. We won't have to pay for mobilization of another contractor if these guys bid on. We're going to do some of the work with a change order to finish out the 19 million that we have appropriated. This additional three, we're hoping that he will bid on it. Because of economy of scale and he's there already, we'll get a very good bid on doing the, the rest of the work that we feel needs to be done. So it's complicated. It's a large project. I'm happy to talk to anybody with any questions, but it's hard to fit in a four-page memo and say here in a few minutes. But we're working hard to try to do the right thing at that plant. And we still have, you know, we still have another plant to worry about and the pipes in the ground, but we feel like once this plan is up, up and running, in the next couple of years, we'll be in really good shape to handle whatever we do in the future.
If anyone would like to speak, they can come down to the mic. Ken, if you could just state your name and your street, and welcome.
Hello, Julie Cavaco from North Hillside Road. I just want to take this opportunity to tell everyone who's on the sewer system to stop using all the things that have ruined the sewer system, because the rest of us in the world who are in septic systems also have to pay for our septic work and the errors of your ways. So thank you so much for paying attention to the little flyers that went out. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's true.
It's pretty cute.
Bruce St. Peter, Snowberry Circle. I had a question. I'm not, I fully support this because I was involved in it when they had a sewer committee and so forth. But I guess my question kind of goes back to the previous page, which kind of ties in with this one, is I noticed the $3 million you're taking out is a 20-year, and I understand most of the bond for the sewer is going, and what is this 20 years, 3% interest on the previous page?
I'm not sure what that is.
Mr. McDaniel?
So we, we haven't selected a funding mechanism for the 3 million, the additional $3 million yet. I'm not sure what you're referring to there, but you can show me, yeah, and I could try to answer, but...
May I?
Oh, 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 yeah. So that, that is, that would be proposed. Those haven't been settled yet, so.
On the sewer use chart?
Right, that, yeah, on the sewer use chart. Let me just take a peek at that a second. Yes, it just, it's a hypothetical. If we took out a 20-year note at 3% interest, we haven't done that, and our rates have been much better. They've been in the, like, the 1 and 3 eighths range. But rates are rising a little bit. This was just to kind of illustrate that our sewer rate right now is 1638.
Right.
We wanted to kind of give people an idea. If we went out and took a worst-case scenario, a 20-year note for 3%, what, what your sewer rate would be if we, if we did that. And that's about, that would be about 1860 would be the rate, but we, 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 we think we'd have to be there in 2024, but we're, we're looking to get a better rate than that and, and really working with, we hope to get another loan from USDA, which is more of a 40-year note. So, so all of that wouldn't hit right in the first year. And so we haven't selected how we're going to pay for that yet. This was an example of one way that you could pay for that.
So the intention is hopefully to roll this into the 40-year note?
Yes, yes.
In the long-range plan.
And the way USDA does it, they actually give a secondary loan. So we're looking at that. We're actually, frankly, I mean, if everybody can get on the phone with their representatives, it's, it's embarrassing that you've had billions of dollars in federal funding set out for infrastructure, right? We heard all about that. The, the governor in, in Massachusetts put out a bill of $9 billion, not a penny is... in, in Massachusetts put out a bill of, uh, $9 billion. Not a penny is coming to Western Massachusetts. So, I'm furious with, with the federal government and our state government. We need money in this town. We're doing shovel-ready jobs right now that we're on the backs of our sewer users and our taxpayers, and zero money coming down from the federal governments based on the infrastructure, billions of dollars of infrastructure that got sent out this last year. It's embarrassing. It's frustrating. It's a scandal. There should be money, and if anybody can make a call to, to their representatives, we need help. I mean, it's just, it's just not fair.
Thank you all for working on this.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Jeff Upton, Hillcrest Ave. And, uh, I was involved with this also for several years, and I support it. I think things are going great, and I understand the ask on the 3 million with the costs and that. Uh, but in years past, as we discussed several times... I'm here to ask, is an opportunity for the septic tank users to be incorporated into this plant where septic tanks, when they're pumped, the residents have a place to dispose?
Yeah.
In our plant? And I'm wondering if that's included, and if not, in what phase will that be included?
So, that's a hard question, because it sounds really easy, like, yes, you'd want to do this. And I'd want to just sit here and say, yes, we're going to have a port where you can just back up, or Greg's can back up and just unload into the plant. But when I've talked to our engineers, the cost to put that infrastructure in, because that, you, when, when the stuff comes out of the houses, it travels and it gets mixed with rainwater and all kinds of stuff. So, the, the potency, when it gets to the plant, is a lot less than if you just drop the truck from, from Greg. So, there would be extensive costs to put in the infrastructure, to kind of dilute that, to bring it in. It is an expense that we can certainly do. We haven't put it into the budget to do that yet because we've had to cut out a lot of other stuff to get this done. But, I mean, it's really up to the townsfolk. If they want to spend that money to do it, I'm open to doing. I know the plant, we'll be able to take that when it gets, uh, done. It's just, it's just another expense that we have to decide, is it worth doing?
Well, my, and I appreciate that. My concern is, uh, over the years here, uh, the town has run into situation where they have difficulty of unloading this
Absolutely.
As far as their sludge.
Yep.
Where to bring it. Well, anybody that's been getting their septic tanks pumped recently are finding out that the, the pumping is the
Yes.
easy part as far as the cost.
It's the disposal.
It's the disposal that is increasing.
Yep.
And we, as septic system owners, are going to be running into the same situation that the town is. Where do we get rid of this?
Right. It's harder and harder.
Because, because the, the, uh, businesses that are pumping tanks, they're running into the same thing that the town is. They're having a hard time. In fact, they're being, being allocated X amount of gallons per.
Yes.
And so, it really does. It's going to put a burden on all these septic tank owners also in town at some place. So, I was just thinking...
It is on the list. It is on the list.
And they're, and they're paying in, like, the, you know, even though if you have a septic, you're paying a 25% of this charge. So, yes, we looked at, like, can we do this? Um, so I, I do think it's a valid thing to keep after. We, and it is much more difficult for people to unload. And I've been talking with Joe Comiford. We had a, we had a sewer kind of summit, maybe two falls ago, where I asked her for another one la, a couple weekends ago, to really address this, because all the, all the Gregs, anybody that's pumping, bossly, they're all having trouble finding a place to unload because of the, you know, the kind of the, the level of stuff that they're, that they're getting rid of. So, I'll keep looking at it, Jeff. I definitely will.
And, and we appreciate that. As long as we're not forgotten.
It's on the list. It's on the list.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, come on down. If we can just direct everything here, that's great.
Sure. Just as a quick thought, in the past, we've had some good luck getting things as a region. Is there any chance to look at this issue regionally?
Yes.
To try to tap some of that money for a regional solution?
We, we have been working on this
Great, great comment, for sure.
Any other discussion? Yes, down to the mic. That's okay. Come on down to the mic, please. It's being broadcast, so can't hear you in our living room. Hello?
Hi. Diane Grickgo, Brayburn Road. Any estimate on how many years this upgrade in this system will be good for?
Typically, when you do a, a project like this commercial project, they figure about 40 to 50 years.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be, it's a cycle. It's an awful cycle, because we still have the old Deerfield plant to work on as well. But typically, when you do a project like that, it's, it's a, you know, it was 1970 when it went in, so good 50 years.
Come with any warranties?
Yeah, there are some warranties on the clarifiers and different pipes and things like that, for sure, but not quite 50 years, but there are some.
All right. Thank you.
Climate resiliency is also being built in.
Any other discussion? Uh, this is a 2/3s vote, so if we can just hold our cards up a little bit longer. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And the motion does carry by a 2/3s majority.
Thank you all so much. I'm grateful.
Article 12, Ms. Shores Ness. Article 12, Ms. Shores Ness.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,416,117, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $345,693 to fund the South County Emergency Medical Service Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and to meet the Town of Deerfield's allocated share of costs as follows.
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness, briefly?
This just covers the, our portion of the operational costs of the South County EMS that is not, um, covered by revenue raised, um, through billing.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 13, Mr. McD, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Shores Ness.
I move that we pass over this article. This is, um, the project...
We can just get a second on that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The, the select board, um, has voted to use our ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act money, to our first, uh, portion to, uh, fund the capital projects listed.
All those in favor of passing over the article? Opposed? That article is passed over. Article 14, Ms. Shores Ness.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $152,700 to fund the capital improvement projects for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, as presented in this guide.
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness?
These projects are, um, from the Capital Improvement Committee that were prioritized as safety and operational issues, um, that we are funding for this coming year.
Does Capital Improvement Committee have any input, or was recommended favorably by them?
Um, as, as a member of the Capital Improvement Committee, I, uh, we voted to recommend, we prioritize and voted to recommend this projects.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 15, Mr. Wolfram?
I move that the town meeting pass over this article.
Second. Uh, all those in favor of passing over the article? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 16, Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the town take $36,727.47 from free cash to fund Deerfield's allocation of the cost to replace the walk-in cooler at Frontier Regional School District, as referenced in this article.
Mr. McDaniel?
So, this is to, uh, again, pretty self-explanatory, but, but to replace the walk-in cooler that is in sorely need of, of replacement to make sure we keep the food nice and cool and kids safe. It's our, our portion of that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Article 17, Mr. Hilchi.
Hilchi, I'm the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, or CPC. I just wanted to briefly explain that the CPC is responsible for reviewing applications to ensure that proposed projects meet the eligibility criteria for funding outlined in the Community Preservation Act. Once proposals have been vetted, those that are eligible are recommended for inclusion on the town meeting warrant, and town voters decide whether or not to approve individual project proposals. Projects are only eligible for CPA funding if they fit into one of four categories: open space, acquiring open space for public use, historic preservation, recreation, like making ball fields and, and so forth, and community housing. In the most recent full year, Deerfield raised $250,000 locally, and the state sent the town an additional $250,000 in CPA matching funds for a 100% match.
Article 17, um, I move that the town appropriate $475,000 for Phase 1 of the rehabilitation of the old grammar school building, ex-senior center, into a new town hall, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $160,200 from the Community Present, Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues, $29,550 from the reserve for historic resources, and $285,250 from the undesignated fund balance, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Deerfield Select Board and approved by the Community Preservation Committee with the following stipulations: All interior and exterior work shall comply with the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation of historic properties. An independent historic preservation consultant shall be hired at the beginning of Phase 1 and participate in all facets of Phase 1 to ensure compliance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards. Any federal or state money, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA money designated by the Select Board, if any, or other funds received for use on this project, shall be the funds of first resort and payments, with CPA funds to be tapped after all other monies have been exhausted. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second. Mr. Hilchi, do you have any comment on that particular motion, or?
Um, I believe that the, uh, Select Board and, uh, the Finance Committee Chair were the people who brought this to the CPA, so they would be the appropriate people to answer questions about the project itself.
Does Finance or Select Board like to briefly comment?
Sure. Um, to start with, though, uh, this is not my role as Finance Committee. I brought this forward as my role as Town Building Advisory Committee, so this is not a Finance Committee opinion. Um, the Town Building Advisory Committee, a couple of years ago, did a survey of town residents, asking for feedback and opinions on town buildings, and there were three very consistent themes that came out of that survey. One was a desire for improved town services. Second was a desire to preserve historical buildings in town, and third was a concern over increasing taxes. And these at first seem contradictory, but in my opinion, this one project allows you to meet all three of those. We're, we're repairing a historical building, refurbishing and making it new again and usable. We're improving town services by providing a, a good building for town office. And since CPA funds can only be used for the restricted purposes that Tim Hilchi mentioned, um, this is one of those uses. These funds can't be used for other things, so we can do this project without raising town taxes at all. Um, so I think it's fairly strong arguments for doing the project. Um, what this project is, this is the first phase of the project. These funds will go towards, um, accomplishing sort of the exploration feasibility, schematic design, surveys, all that kind of stuff that's required to fully define the project, create drawings, come up with a solid cost estimate, and do the beginnings of the actual construction drawings. Um, we will come back a year from now, I hope, um, with a Phase 2 proposal that, um, would then go ahead and do the actual refurbishment of the building.
Any discussion? Yes, if you could just come down to the mic.
Lisa Middens, 80 North Main Street. Um, my question is not about, uh, restoring the old senior center building, the old grammar school building. That seems like a really valuable thing for me to, to me to do. I'm just confused about what happens to the seniors and the senior center, and, and I wasn't aware that there was a real problem with the town hall building, and why do we need a new town hall, and why isn't the senior center piece more of a priority in this?
Mr. McDaniel?
Well, so, to answer that, um, so the building that is currently the, was the senior center that we're talking about remodeling, really isn't designed well for a senior center. There's no ground floor. There's, it's not really, um, it doesn't have the right space for, and we're in the middle of doing a needs assessment and survey on what the seniors need, what kind of space would be required. Um, and, and our town, our town hall building isn't really, you know, it's not a good, you know, it's been repurposed many years ago into a town hall from a school. If you ever worked there or spent any time there, it's extremely hot and extremely cold, very inefficient. The acoustics are awful. There's not enough room. Um, we're always trying to find a place to put somebody. There's no rooms for, for meetings. Um, it just doesn't really serve the purpose of the town going forward, and the thought was to look at this building. We may find that this isn't the right building for the town hall, but I think this is, it is a building worth saving, and it's a building worth looking at, that we could put town hall into it. And, um, it, and we'll look at that. Do we need to add on to it? Is there, um, there's a lot of work left to go to kind of, as, as Julie said, the work is to really flush out, design, plan, where offices would go. Is there enough space? All of that. But we do think it's valuable to save the building. We are also working on trying to secure grants to, to possibly put in addition on for a three-town senior center. We've been lobbying, again, call your legislature, zero money coming to Western Mass for infrastructure projects. Really, really frustrating. But we've been talking with our state, you know, legislatures and, and, and federal, um, representatives to try and find ways to pull that off. In the meantime, there's an article at one point we passed over was rehabbing the church building. It's next to the library, and that is going on this year to have a space for our seniors to be until we can flush out a, a good space for them. So, there's a lot of moving parts, and it's not easily kind of laid out in a easy sentence, but it's kind of where we're going.
Potentially, the old grammar school could have an extension built on to it for a senior, for a senior center?
It could. Yes. Yep. That's, that's the, one of the visions at the moment. Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town appropriate $11,000 from the Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues, a 5% local match for a Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources grant of $209,000 to create an agricultural preservation restriction on a 12.4-acre farm parcel identified in the assessor's records as MAP 149 Lot 6, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Deerfield Select Board and approved by the Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second. Any comment on that, or someone in the APR?
Could you just tell us where it is? There's no picture of the map enough.
So, this piece of property is, um, off Setright Road, uh, and it's contiguous with another parcel that I believe was preserved last year, smaller parcel. And, uh, so you can see it from 116 as you head towards Conway.
It's prime soils. It's about the top 5% soils in the world. It's worth saving.
Yep.
Part of the Ostrowski firm.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town appropriate $350,000 for the Town Common Rehabilitation and Restoration Project request, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $200,000 from the Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues... Fund 2023 estimated revenues, and $150,000 from the undesignated fund balance, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the ad hoc Town Common Committee and approved by the Community Preservation Committee, with the stipulation that any federal or state money, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA money designated by the Select Board, if any, or other funds received for use on this project, shall be the funds of first resort and payments, with CPA funds to be tapped after all other monies have been exhausted. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Any comment, Mr. Hilchi? Anyone opposed to the application? Any questions or discussion? Yes, come forward, please.
Diane Grippko, Brayburn Road. I just wondered about what the timeframe is for the project of the Town Common. I was part of a Zoom meeting, you know, a few months ago, and I really questioned the design for the, you know, I know it's kind of a rendition, a proposal, but it doesn't seem to fit that area. It's a very tiny common, and when I looked at the proposed rendition, I'm like, that's not going to fit the common. So I guess my question is, is there a final design? Do we get to see it? Do we get to review it? I know there were comments that people hate the fountain. Well, I love the fountain. I love the common.
We do, too. We love it, too.
But the design that they showed was not our fountain, and it was a more modern design. And for people that are looking and have spent tons of money to keep the rural and, you know, old-time character, to bring in a modern version of a fountain, I don't think works for South Deerfield.
So, Mr. McDaniel?
So it's my question, what's the process? Once the funds are allocated, approved, you know, the final say and the final design, that's more my question.
Yep, we do have a lot of work still left to do if funded, and it isn't a final design. We're taking people's comments and input. We aren't removing the fountain. The only thing we were looking to do is keep that. We're going to keep the stones and the historical aspect of the fountain, but we wanted to kind of lower the depth a little bit to make sure it was a little safer in case kids fall in it, and then to make seating areas around it. I think the main thing, I've been on the Town Common Committee when we first started this with Jane Trujair years ago, and it was really, the thing that set it in motion was when we had the Memorial Day service. Fay Bardwell was our, you know, speaker every year, and he had the hardest time just walking across the crosswalk to stand up. I mean, he almost fell down a couple of times. The crosswalks or sidewalks on the park are very old. They're not ADA compliant. We have crosswalks that lead to no place on the common at all. So there is some modernization of the downtown that we want to make it more ADA compliant and safer and smoother places to sit and get new benches. But I do, we are still taking public comment. There will be a final revision, and we just want as much public input as we can. We can't please everybody. The overlay will fit. The plan we have will fit. There'll be a couple of feet that will edge out towards Cumberland Farms, but not, I mean, we're talking a foot or two, just because that's the layout. You know, that common's been there for hundreds of years, and the way the roads have been paved over time, they've kind of taken some of the common and left some of the common. So we were just kind of taking what was really the boundaries of the common. Some point, we'd love to expand it at some, you know, you go to many towns in their big areas, but we're not going there.
But it's not South Deerfield, and I appreciate what you're saying. And I mean, I've said before, even on the Zoom meeting, I literally go by, I would say 100 times a week.
Yeah, you do.
But I mean, I live in the center of town. Because I'm driving, I am always going by the common, probably more than anybody.
And you've done so much work over the years.
Well, that's the women's club in that, you know, and part of the reason I do it, because I drive by it so much. But there are always people on the common. I can appreciate the fact that the updates, and I appreciate the work that the committee has done to improve it. But I guess my point is, is I like the overall character of it, and I understand, you know, evening out sidewalks and doing whatever. And they talk about the benches, but I'll tell you, there's a lot of older people and literally tons of people that go and sit on those benches just the way they are.
Yeah, they're not good, though.
There was a group of bicyclists, you know, I think there was maybe eight to 10 bicyclists. So it is a stopping point.
It is.
And it's a beautiful area.
We love it.
You know, right. So I just don't want to see it change too much, is my point.
I hear you.
Or I'd want to at least give the townspeople the opportunity to see how much they really want to change.
For sure.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion before you?
You know.
Mr. Wolfram, briefly.
For some of you who don't know, the fountain is actually an essential part of the South Deerfield Water District, to keep the water flowing through the pipes. So that's something that has to be taken into consideration. And, you know, born and raised here, you know, I can say I've never fell into that fountain.
Well, depends.
I can let you know, though, that my twin brother and I would jump into the fountain and get some coins and either had the billys or billings.
Oh, man. Moving on.
We were a little mischievous at the time, so, but, you know, it's an essential part. It's a beautiful, yes, we want to do a lot to improve the looks to the center of South Deerfield.
All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Thank you.
Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town appropriate $30,000 from the Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues for the subsidized senior housing feasibility study request, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the ad hoc Senior Housing Committee and approved by the Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second. Is there anyone here from the ad hoc Senior Housing Committee that wishes to be heard? Yes, if you could come up to the mic.
Yes, Anna Lee Wolfco, Four Mountain Road, South Deerfield. I'm on the ad hoc Senior Housing Committee, and there will be two allocations for this money. The first is to look at a feasibility study to determine the best place for senior housing, and this would be subsidized senior housing that would be taxable and part of our tax rules, so that's good. And the second part of the allocation would be to fund the survey that will document the need and demand for senior housing. We've certainly had many informal requests, and also the Deerfield demographics show that there is a need for senior housing. But in order to receive funding from a number of funding sources, we need to be able to have these studies. And so I do hope you can support it, and also, I think many of you received postcards in the mail for a senior housing survey, so please fill out your survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schorsness, the job?
I just was going to speak, because Lili, our chair, is not here. She's out of town.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, come on down to the mic.
Jennifer Remelard, Conway Street. I'm also on the Senior Ad hoc Committee or Senior Housing. I believe this $30,000 is also coming from the appropriated $500,000 that was already put aside, voted on last year at annual town meeting. No?
No.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
I'm all in support of it. My only comment is, we probably have three older sewer studies that are sitting on shelves in town hall somewhere. We've got older studies of Personnel Committee that have been sitting on shelves. All I ask is that the committee involved in this, stay involved with the people doing this, and make sure you get what you want out of it, not that we're here in 10 years asking for this all over again. Thank you.
Matt, Matt, just having gone to meetings for over 20 years, we are never turning it over again. We've learned three times. We will have senior housing this time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town appropriate $15,000 from, let me see. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. Sorry about that. I move that the town appropriate $800 from the Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues for the preservation of 18th and 19th century books of the Ware and Williams families, all in a manner consistent with the proposal submitted by the Comtuck Valley Memorial Association and approved by the Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be expended within three years under the direction of the Select Board, and any unused funds to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund as required by statute.
Second.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Nové could speak about this, just to share.
Mr. Nové, would you like to speak?
I'm likely to give the job, so I shouldn't.
Okay.
All right. Well, essentially, what it is, is these are actual physical records of these important families in Deerfield's history, and there will be restoration work to preserve them and to store them in the climate-appropriate rooms, and, you know, to also be able to use them for research in town histories and so forth.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town transfer $13,000 of Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues for the reserve for community housing. General Law Chapter 44B requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be used or set aside for community housing.
Mr. Hilchi, essentially, under the statute, my understanding is required to put certain amounts into certain categories if you don't award them.
That's correct, and.
That's the nature of this motion?
Yes, and since we have just approved $30,000 from the $43,000 set aside, the remainder is $13,000, so that's statutorily required.
All those in favor? Are there any discussion? All those in favor, I apologize. There's some discussion. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town appropriate $15,000 from the Community Preservation Fund 2023 estimated revenues for Community Preservation Committee administrative expenses.
Second.
These are, this is an annual event. We're allowed, under statute, to put in 5% for administrative expenses. We seldom use them, but occasionally, there, a need arises. This past year, we were looking to potentially hire a grant writer to help fund some of the work that we are now going to be doing for the Old Grammar School project, and we would have used those administrative funds to pay for that expense. If we don't use these, they go back into each year, any money that's not expended goes back into the undesignated fund, and we make another request in the following year.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries as well.
Okay, final motion. I move that the town extend the community preservation grant funding period for the Indian House and Bloody Brook Tavern Rehabilitation and Restoration Project Phase 2 by an additional year to allow for completion of the project in 2023.
Second. Just briefly, if you can explain the extension?
Sure. This project is substantially finished, but due to COVID-19 interruptions, the Mass Historical Commission has not completed the final evaluation of the project, so this extension request of the grant is intended to allow additional time for MHC to complete their evaluation, and it's recommended by the Finance Committee.
And so when it was initially awarded, it was for three years, and those three years are up, so you're asking for that extension?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. McDaniel? Article 19.
Oh, this you did? Yep.
I move that the town vote to apply the proceeds from the sale of land to the depth incurred in acquiring such parcels of land in accordance to General Law Chapter 44, Section 63. Parcels in the assessor's map is 168 Lot 21, shown as parcel 2-1, consisting of approximately 7.971 acres, and parcel 2-2, consisting of approximately 0.924 acres. On the subdivided site plan, the plan, recorded in the Frank County Registry of D's Plan Book 138, page 7, dated October 21, 2020, upon receipt of the funds.
Second. Mr. Wolfram?
This is authorizing the town to basically accept the money when we're paid for the land.
Is there a quick description where the land is?
What was that?
Is there a quick description of where the land is?
This is the old Oxford Pickle Shop property next to the highway garage, and it's, we currently have a contract, purchase and sale on that property, and we're just waiting for the 21C to be completed, right?
There's some environmental testing that the prospective owner would like to complete. So if we were, if town meeting approves this, this would allow us to pay the note that the town took off once the proceeds come in.
Any discussion? Yes, if you can come down to the mic.
Hi, I'm Kip Camos. I live on Greenfield Road. What is the amount of the proceeds from the sale? From the purchase and sale? Two parcels.
Sorry, Trevor's looking at me funny. It is upwards of $100,000.
$100,000 for the eight acres?
Above the 358,000 that the town paid for the ban, paid to repurchase the land. So it's a little over $100,000 the town could recoup, above what they paid.
So.
We're selling the property for approximately $480,000.
That was my, thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 20. Mr. McDaniel?
I move the town vote to allow the Select Board to submit a home rule petition as set forth in the warrant.
Second. Mr. McDaniel, if you can briefly summarize.
Do you want me to explain? Okay. So, for many years, the town has had one position that was created by the legislature that was the town clerk, treasurer, and tax collector, all under one person. Many years back, we asked the legislature to allow us that to be an appointed position, so we have to go back to the legislature and ask them to split that. Deerfield is one of only two towns in the state that actually have all three positions under one job, so it's very hard to hire somebody. When Barb left, Barb Hancock used to be our person that did all of that, wonderful person, moved on to other jobs and endeavors, and so we're left trying to hire somebody to do that, but there's really nobody out in the marketplace that does all three of those jobs. So we really took this time to kind of think about how we would restructure the offices and split the town clerk apart from the treasurer-collector. And so that's really what we're asking the legislature to do, is to allow us that ability to split those two jobs, so we could then hire two people, because the jobs have changed immensely over the years, and one would be more of a part-time position as clerk and more of a full-time position as the treasurer-collector.
Any questions or discussion?
I would like to compliment, since Barb has left, Sarah and Jen have done an excellent job in running that office. Woo! You know, as a Select Board, it's been almost a seamless transition, which is very good to see when you're trying to run a town and making sure everything is running the way it's supposed to. So two very capable people, and actually, we have three very capable people in that office, which is a very tight space, why we need more room for a bigger town office, but that's a demonstration.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 21. Ms. Schorsness?
I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 90, Section 17(c), to allow the Select Board to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour in all areas in town defined by the state law as thickly settled or business district. areas in town defined by the state law as thickly settled or business district that are not a state highway.
Second.
Basically, this is to address the complaints, speeding complaints that the police department receives, and allow us as a Select Board to lower the speed limits.
Any discussion? Mr. Hilti?
I just wondered if either the chief or one of the Select Board members could explain roughly which streets we would be affecting this change on?
Chief, would you like to address that, or?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'll kind of stand a little awkward with the mic. I do get a lot of complaints town-wide on streets. One of the recent ones is North Hillside, South Main, North Main, Stillwater, South Mill River Road. How much time do you have? So traditionally, what is required under Mass General Law was, we were to go out and do a speed study, and when we did a speed study, we would average out those numbers at the end of that speed study, we'd send them to the state, and the state would certify that speed limit based on an average number. We know cars are created faster now, quieter, safer, so if we put an officer out there to do a speed study now, what you're going to see naturally in your 30 mile an hour neighborhoods is a speed come back from the state certified at 35. That doesn't do any of us any value. Under the Municipal Modernization Act, about four years ago, the state heard from all across the Commonwealth complaints from mayors, town administrators, and Select Board members, this was one of the complaints they heard about it, so they allowed municipalities, by town meeting vote, to give the Select Board the authority to reduce those speed limits down for those narrow roads right down to 25 miles an hour. So I strongly support this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? That motion carries. Article 22. Mr. McDaniel?
I move that town meeting pass over this article.
Second, somewhere?
Second.
All those in favor passing away the article. Opposed? That article's passed over. Article 23 is a citizen's petition. Hello. You do not need to read it, nope, you can summarize it, but if you can just introduce yourself.
Laurie Busada, North Main Street. So this article is coming to us this year, but has come before all of the other Franklin County towns in 2019 and 2020. Basically, the governor put forth a commission involving a lot of native peoples and historians to look at the flag and the image that it represents, and come up with something that more reflects our relationship with native peoples currently. So just as we don't have flags that represent an adversarial relationship with the United States and England anymore, it seems like we need to modernize the relationship that the current flag shows with native peoples. So the passing this resolution would just be telling the legislature that we want the work that started on this commission to carry forth, so that the work thus far doesn't get dropped.
And so your motion is as presented in the guide? Is there, a second? Any discussion or questions on that? All those in favor of the motion. Opposed? That motion carries. And before we wrap up, I just want to say a couple of thank yous. First, FCAT, who did another amazing job this evening. Thank you, Kevin, and it's also just a quick acknowledgement of Chris Collins, who had been our director of FCAT, that passed away far too young, is a fellow moderator in Montague, and he's helped us for many years, so we thank him for his years as well. The Finance Committee, we'll be having a few, I'm understanding that there are some appointments up this year, and people will not be coming back, so I do want to thank the committee as a whole, and also a few of those members who have given countless years to the town of Deerfield, and it's a difficult job and a thankless one often, and I have my appreciation. And with that, I hereby move that the meeting adjourn to meet again in the polling places at the meeting room at the town offices at 8 Conway Street in the village of South Deerfield on Monday, the second day of May 2022, at 10 o'clock in the forenoon, then and there to act on the following articles, to choose all necessary town officers as indicated within the guide. When we complete our town meeting, if we dissolve it, that's the end of it, so in the case of a year of elections, we continue the meeting from today until Election Day, and it's adjourned thereafter, so that's kind of a procedural motion. All those in favor of the motion as described? Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming out and getting back together in the auditorium again.